Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Richmond Common Council for November the 3rd. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for prayer?
I pledge allegiance into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for this day, and thank you for each and every person here. I pray, dear God, that you would govern our hearts, help us to make wise decisions in humility, keeping everybody's best interest at heart. I pray, dear God, for our first responders, your protection over them, protection over our city, and may we grow and thrive in honor and glory of you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Bumbleau.
You're welcome.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. There are no minutes this evening, they will be presented on the 17th. And we have no communications from the mayor tonight. Report of Board of Public Works and Safety, the minutes of the Board of Public Works for September the 25th, October the 9th, and 16th were included in your packet. Do we have any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Hearing none. We have no reports from department heads or standing committees that I'm aware of. Any miscellaneous business to come before us at this time? Ordinances on first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Turner.
I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance 53-2025 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance 53-2025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Ordinance number 53-2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submission and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Audrey Shake, and I'm the grant administrator for the city. Ordinance 53-2025 is an appropriation ordinance authorizing the acceptance and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. The Street Tree Commission is requesting $11,422 through the Indiana DNR Community and Urban Forestry Assistance Grant to support the completion of a graduate certificate in urban forestry for landscape and naturalist leader Laura Carnsnutty. The curriculum includes coursework in urban forestry planning, green infrastructure, leadership, and data analysis, which will be applied to a full update of the city's current tree ordinance. The application was submitted on October 22nd, 2025. There is no cash match, all matching funds were submitted as in kind. The expected award announcement date for this grant is November 17th, 2025.
Questions? Comments? I have a question.
Yes.
How long does it take to complete this course?
That would be a question for Laura. She's here tonight, I'll let her take over.
This is the young lady who's going to be doing it, right? Okay.
So it's 19 to 20 credit hours, which can be completed anywhere from a year to two years on average, depending on the number of credits taken per quarter. It's offered quarterly.
Are these going to be undergrad credits?
Towards a graduate certificate, so since a full graduate degree, or master's degree, I believe is around 40 credit hours, so this would be about half, but it would be an official graduate certificate. In the future, it would be applicable to use those credits towards like a master's in natural resources. But I think that the timing of this dovetailing with the other grants that we've received from the DNR, and having a complete public tree inventory next year, it is just perfect timing to make sure that our ordinance is in alignment with industry standards, which hasn't been updated, I believe, since 1993. So it's great timing, I think, to tie it all together and keep the program moving in a good direction.
You intend to go ahead and get a master's in this?
I'm not sure, I'm just gonna take it one step at a time. I think that if, I mean, the goal would be, the grant cycle has to be complete by May 1st of 2027, so it would be a pretty quick turnaround. The goal would be to have an ordinance in front of council by early 2027 for reviewing and possible adoption.
Well, I hope you do. I hope you get it.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
I just want to thank you, I'm on the Street Tree Commission, and I know that it is, it is a very active group, that we have assignments and everything, and it's wonderful, and I appreciate everything that you do for our community with the trees.
Just to clarify, all the coursework will be done outside of my 40-hour work week, this will be done on my personal time and part of what will contribute to the match.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Turner.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 53-2025 to second reading, read by title only.
Second. We have a motion and second to suspend the rules and advance ordinance 53-2025 to second reading, read by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance 53-2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submission, acceptance, and appropriation of a grant from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources.
Ordinance number 53-2025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
There you go.
I testify to it, because I've been with her several times when she's been doing work out at the park, and she deserves everything that you can help her out with. I get the general feeling I didn't really need to get up here and say this, and I hope that's the case. So help her out, she deserves it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Anyone else in the audience wants to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Do your name and address please.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and second to engross, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Finance Committee report?
Yes, the Finance Committee met on this ordinance and recommends passage.
Thank you. Final comments or questions?
Call the question.
Second.
Have a motion and second to call the question, please call the question.
Aye.
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 Thank you, motion passed. Mr. Engle, do you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right. I wish you your best of luck.
I think that's appropriate, thank you.
Yep.
We have no ordinances on second reading. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council at this time?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned, thank you. RP and L and...
Amen.
You are watching Whitewater Government Television, WGTV, Channel 11, part of the Whitewater
Welcome to Richmond Empower Light Meeting for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
Jerry Purcell.
Here.
Ader present.
There are no minutes to be approved. Bills to be paid.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Parker.
We have reviewed the bills and moved for approval of $7,790,837.48.
Second. We have a motion to approve the bills for the amount of $7,790,000.837.48.
Very good.
Did I get that right?
Yep, you did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No remarks from the chairman? Any unfinished business? Reports from the general manager.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tony.
Okay, we have a couple of action items on the agenda this evening. The first of our action items is one that's been on the agenda, it seems like forever, but it's a, it's a request to award a bid for a new 2025 or newer Class 7, 71-foot working height bucket truck for the line department, as previously approved in the 2025 budget. We do have a trade of a 2009 unit. We did receive one bid from Altech, the bid price was $307,338, a $6,000 trade-in for a total bid price of $301,338. We did reach out to Altech about the bid, or the trade-in price, and the reason we're trading this truck is because the boom is going to need to be recertified in a few years. Chances are, most of the hydraulics will need to be reworked, just due to the age nearing 20 years old. So basically, what we're being offered is the chassis trade-in price, because they're gonna have to rework this boom, and at the end of the day, if we were to spend $30,000 or $40,000 to rework the boom, that's about what the truck is worth. But then you're still stuck with a 20-year-old truck. So we do recommend moving forward with this, with the price after trade of $301,338. The amount we did budget for this particular truck was $360,000.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Purcell.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of this truck and accept the bid at $301,338.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much. The next action item, we are requesting permission to open bids for one new horizontal directional drill for the line department, as previously approved in the 2025 capital budget. The trade is a 2015 ditch witch directional drill with trailer. I do have the proof of publication, this was published in the Western Wayne News a couple of times, so I'd like to enter that into the record and request approval of...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Move to accept proof of publication, place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We do have two bids, I'll open those now. First bid is from Vermeer, in the amount of, the price of $280,807.69. They're offering us a $105,000 trade-in for a total price of $175,807.69. And I was just looking to see where Vermeer was located, I do believe they're out of Indianapolis, Fisher's, Indiana.
I'm sorry, Mr. Foster.
Yes.
What was the trade-in?
$105,000.
Oh, okay.
And we have one more to open. This is from Ditch Witch, price $258,500, offering a trade-in of $70,000 for a total price of $188,500, and they are located... Make sure we put that closer to the front of the bid package in the future, I'm pretty sure they're out of Indianapolis as well. Brownsburg, Indiana, yeah, close to Indy, so. So we would request permission to take these under advisement to come back with a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion...
Did we already move?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Parker.
How come they're offering us so much money on trade-in on this thing? Is it that in good a shape?
Well, maybe it's the age, but we use the heck out of this thing. It's one of our daily drivers these days, as we try to put as much underground as we can, so it has a lot of hours on it, but, but they are in high demand. If you drive the country roads of rural America right now, everybody has one of these, and they're putting in fiber, so they must be able to rework it and make some money on it, is my guess, but, yeah.
It just seems like...
A lot of money.
A lot of money for...
For something that we've, we've worn out, yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Timing is everything. General report?
Okay, well, this evening, if it's okay, I'm going to give you a little bit of a review of 2025. I know we have a couple of months to go, but typically, we do this as part of the budget process, and next week, we will be presenting our 2026 budget. So I always like to talk a little bit about what we've done with the current year budget to show you, you know, how we put those budget dollars to work. So this year, we have added three new employees, Josh Stewart in the line department, he is a tree trimmer apprentice, Brienne Lips in our general office, is a junior accounting clerk, and Kyle Culberson in the substation department as an electrician C. So I've got these kind of grouped by departments. So with the human resources department, we have, we also, this year, had five retirements with 175 years of total service that we lost with those five employees. Todd Boykore, Kimberly Harvey, Steve Glover, Chuck Jewett, and Terry Stevens, so they've been, most of them have been gone all, all year, they, most of them retired early in the year, but we still miss them, good, good, good group of folks, that's for sure. Throughout the year, the human resources department stayed busy, we had 38 different promotions or incremental steps, so as, for example, linemen moving through an apprenticeship program, they have the possibility to see an incremental step every six months, so with so many new employees, there's a lot of that that is occurring. We did hold a health fair, and 51 of our employees participated in the health fair. As part of that, we get blood work and opportunity to have a flu shot, and then vendors come and talk to the employees, so it's always a really good event, and the human resources department does a great job putting that together. We had some wellness challenges, some lunch and learn events, we hosted a high school intern in the mechanic's garage this year, and as we recently discussed, we did settle on a three-year agreement with IBEW 1395. We had 83 of our employees recertified in CPR this year, 90 employees completed a defensive driving course, which was probably all of the employees at that time, because it was, we required everyone to go through that. All employees were regularly tested for email scam awareness via random phishing tests. These are becoming more and more, or the scams are becoming more and more frequent, and they're becoming more and more sophisticated, so we try our hardest to stay on top of this in educating our employees. Actually, at the MPa board meeting on Friday, their attorney gave a presentation on not just electronic scams, but scams that involve social engineering, and gave an example of a utility that had an open records request, and someone used that data from the open records request to scam that utility. So anyway, we're always trying to stay on our toes when it comes to scams. Always like to celebrate accomplishments, we had one employee receive his master's degree, it was Kyler Naylor in the IT department, and Josh Stewart received his CDL, he's in the line department. In the finance office, we had a clean audit, we talked about that earlier in the year, just mentioned Bree, Brienne Lips, being our new employee that, in the finance office, that they have successfully onboarded, and she is doing a tremendous job. The bills that you review every couple of weeks, those all go through Brienne, so she does a good job keeping those paid. We started cross-training some of the things that the finance office does with the customer service office, I think you've received your monthly financial statements timely, and we're continuing to work on the cost of service study, and we'll know more on some, some numbers in the next 45 days. Speaking of customer service, they always have a project they're working on, one of them that they worked on, that took a tremendous amount of time, was called the owner leave-on project, and this has to do with rental units, and when there's turnover in the rental units, whether or not these landlords want the power left on or shut off, and we had a lot of old data, we have a lot of rental units in Richmond, so they took the time to go through and update all of those files, which is very helpful. Amy does a good job, she's the customer service manager of training, and they updated their training manuals this year, they have taken on a tremendous amount of new responsibilities right now. Our dispatcher is unfortunately not in the office for a while, so they've taken on the majority of his duties, and they're doing a really good job, so we appreciate them doing that. And of course, we've already talked about some cross-training with the general office, and that, again, is also very helpful. Meter department, I won't spend a lot of time here, because I gave a presentation on this a couple of months ago, but when I did, was working on this presentation, so this was October 16th, at that time, we had installed 4,397 AMI meters so far in 2025. Total, we were at 17,247, so we have approximately 4,000 to be installed in 2026. Of course, these numbers are wrong as of today, because I know they've installed more AMIs since October 16th, but we're getting really close to finishing up that project. Of course, I talked a little bit about training last, I think it was two months ago, about all the training programs that we send our employees to, especially due to a lot of new employees because of retirements, and that's kind of a list of some of the things that the meter department has done. Engineering, since we're on that subject of training, we have a relatively new employee, Sean Andre, he's working on his staking certification program through APPA, he's completed two of his four sections this year. Brent Wolf, there in the middle with the blue hat, completed the underground distribution system training through APPA, I'm sorry, and Sean was the TV PPA. Scott Minardi completed RTAC training, if you ask what RTAC stands for, I can just tell you it has to do with substation monitoring and, and a lot of very technical stuff that engineers understand. And then Caleb Kettering, our SCADA operations manager, completed additional SCADA training, he's the one that replaced Steve Glover that I mentioned earlier that retired this year. Another big project that engineering is working on is that we finally kicked off our AutoCAD to GIS project, and this would interface with NISC, our software program, so that, let's say, when a project is designed, it would interface with our inventory and work management and work order system to help create a quote, figure out what we have in inventory, if we need to order inventory for the project, and so on and so forth. So when this project is completed, it will be a big time saver, and will bring us into the modern era. A lot of the new requirements, especially like when we're dealing with Endot for projects, they do require us to have more than just an AutoCAD drawing of our project, so this is something that will be ongoing throughout 2026 as well, but we did get started on it this year. Line department, we started the year, a very cold year, and as you may recall, we had a crew go to Henderson, Kentucky, so again, it's always nice when we can return the favor to a community that needs some help. And with the line department, in, in our budget, you know, we always have those ongoing m... And with the line department, in our budget, you know, we always have those ongoing maintenance items, streetlights and pole replacements. So just a quick reminder, especially now that it's getting darker a lot sooner. We're getting a lot of calls about streetlights being out. And that's good because one of the ways that we find out is when someone calls. The easiest way to report a streetlight is to go to our website. And right on the front page, it says, "Report an outage." Click there and you can report your streetlight out there. And then pole replacements, we do a study on all of our wooden poles every 10 years. And then we spend the next 10 years replacing those that are bad. So throughout this year, of course, we were replacing poles that needed replaced.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Tony, when you're calling in a streetlight that is out, you need, do you need the number on the streetlight?
It's very helpful if you have the pole number.
Okay, you gotta go out and...
But if you can give us the, hey, it's on the corner of Northwest Fifth and Pearl. That's the second light down, we can sometimes figure that out, too.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Of course, we talk a lot of times in the budget about the tree budget. We do use contractors throughout the year, but this is our tree crew that stays busy. And they can stay busy 24/7 if we could do that with ongoing maintenance, too. The trees under our power lines throughout the city, working on hot spots and other things. So got a good group of guys there. And there on the left is Josh Stewart, our new employee that I mentioned earlier. Middle one is Kalen Ray, and then Tim Bunch, he's the foreman there in the white hat. For substations, there's a lot that goes on there. We're really proud. And some of you did go on the tour with us earlier this year when we went through Whitewater Valley and then ended up at Johnson Street. But proud of the work that our guys do. They have completely rebuilt the 4KV substation down at Johnson Street. That project isn't finished, but the major work outside is finished. Now we're going to shift our work inside on the controls. And that's, we'll be talking about that next week in our budget. And here I list engineering in line because these are projects where the engineering department is involved designing the project and then our crews are able to go out and build those projects, including several, several customer projects this year. Transcendia, Shelton Fireworks, the asphalt plant out there on Industries Road, Liberation Labs, Chick-fil-A, the Wawa gas station. That one was a little more challenging than usual because it was kind of a moving target throughout the year. Of course, it started out as a gas station. Then we found out they wanted to add electric vehicle chargers. And then we found out they wanted to add a second bank of electric vehicle chargers. So kept our engineers very busy redesigning that project and making sure we had the equipment out there that can handle that load. So anyway, it's gonna be an exciting project or a gas station when it's open with all the EV chargers. Other projects, the Well Care Community Health Center out on the west side on West Main. That was a big project for us. Chester Heights expansion, I know you were involved, I believe, with some work there, maybe rezoning or vacating some land out there earlier in the year. Test Road Trailhead project, and then the Sixth and Main project. So I'm going to digress just for a moment. So this is a picture from the tower at the firehouse where you can see the project being completed. So if you go to the RPNL weather cam and you click on that little arrow that I have circled at the top of the weather cam, you can get another view of our weather, which is the live footage of that building being constructed. So if you're ever bored, want to see what's going on downtown, you can sit there and watch the building being built, watch the rain swing around.
Wonderful.
Not that I've ever done that. Anyway, we'll get back to the review. Of course, another big project that has kept our crews busy this year is the Interstate 70 project. In tonight's bills that you approved, there was an easement that we had to acquire in order to facilitate relocating our power lines. We do have transmission lines that cross 70 that we had to move. And all of that work, though, is reimbursable by Endot. And this also included not only our power lines, but also Parallax had to take an outage one night and reroute fiber. And it's literally spent all night from about midnight till about 7:00 the next morning splicing fiber.
Wow.
IT, I won't list all of these things, but IT stays busy, keeping us safe, making sure we have the best, you know, protection we can have from some of these scams and updated firewalls. But some other projects they worked on this year for us, we updated our fuel system software, which is going to allow us to keep a better eye on and track vehicle mileage and miles per gallon and help us, you know, track usage costs. Our NISC servers were upgraded. NISC is the software we use for everything. Again, incremental security improvements throughout the year, phishing, testing. And then reworked some of our forms to be in Spanish for the customer service office. So again, they stay very, very busy. We've got a really good group there. Of course, community involvement. Mary Stevens does a wonderful job with the Partners in Education program. It's a multi-week program. Not only do we go to the students, the students come to us. They get to tour the generating facility. They tour some of our facilities and get to learn a lot about the electric industry. And our guys really love showing off what they do to the kids.
That's awesome.
It's a fun program. We participate in touch truck events and parades and things like Safety Village. We do have a little house out at Safety Village. And just last week, Mary had one of our linemen out there helping her pass out candy. And one of the things I'd like to mention that for these community involvement projects, the parades and touch truck events and Safety Village, our guys volunteer their time to drive the trucks and/or participate handing out candy, which I think is very admirable. We really appreciate them doing that, so. And to tie it all together, all these things that we do throughout the year to make sure that we're being frugal with our dollars, but also being as reliable as we can and safe. Did earn us the, once again, the Reliable Public Power Provider Award through the American Public Power Association this year. We did get the Gold Member Award. In the middle, there's a picture, that's Caleb Kettering, our system operator. He accepted the award on behalf of RPNL at the APPA Engineering and Operations Conference earlier this year. So again, all these things we do, it's nice to be able to have sort of a benchmarking organization like APPA through this program to help make sure that we're on par with where we need to be. Any questions on that review? There will be a few things I throw in next week or in our budget presentation, but thought I would discuss some of these things tonight.
Mr. Chairman. Tony, back to human services. We have a high school intern in the mechanics garage. Do we have any programs with schools or anything to accept interns?
Our last two high school interns actually came from across the border in Ohio. So, but we did, through this last union contract, make some changes to our language. I think I mentioned it that night. Because we do know the Indiana program is ramping up where we're going to see the opportunity to have more high school interns.
Oh, good.
The internship programs that we traditionally have had have been college interns of RPNL employees. So we kind of broke the mold for the past two years with these high school interns that we've had.
Do we know where that high school intern is from?
National Trail Rider?
Yeah. Oh, great, good, thank you.
I don't go to Ohio much, so I'm...
Any additional questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Quick reminder, we will be closed for Veterans Day next week. So just a reminder of that. And then following Veterans Day, once again, we have our special meeting. Will be held here at 6:30 to review the 2026 operating and capital budgets. There is a BZA meeting right before our meeting. So give or take a few minutes if they run late. But Dustin thought it shouldn't take a full hour, so we should be in good shape. We will also have box dinners for you in the law conference room prior to the meeting if you'd like to grab a bite to eat before I keep you all night long going through the budget, so.
There you go.
And I'd entertain any questions you have.
Great. There's no test on this, right?
Next week, yes.
Next week. That concludes our agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for adjournment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.